To take attendance and call the roll.
Bach?
Present.
Danielson?
Present.
Demay?
Here.
Glassheen?
Here.
Sager?
Here.
Westerman is here. Chair Weinhagen.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I will note that we have added an item 4.4 to this agenda. It is acquisition of SOAR property and will require action on that item. I'd entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Yeah.
Bach?
Oh, yeah.
Danielson?
Yay.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman is aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. We'll move to item 2.1, a resolution to hold school board meetings via teleconference. And if you give me one second, because I've been bouncing between documents, I will present this and we will move it. Bear with me for a second. Turns out I get a lot of emails from Sarah O'Rourke. There we go. All right, so just for some background, on Friday, March 13th, Governor Walz issued the Executive Order 20-01, which declared a peacetime state of emergency pursuant to his powers under the Minnesota Statute, Chapter 12, Emergency Management. This step allows school boards to meet by conference call or other electronic means under Minnesota State Statute 13D.021. The following conditions must be met in order for a board to meet by conference call. First, the presiding officer, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer of the school board must determine that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of a public health pandemic or officially declared emergency. All school board members can hear one another and hear all discussions. The public present at the regular board meeting can hear all discussions and votes unless attendance at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the health pandemic or emergency declaration. At least one member of the school board, chief legal counsel, or chief administrative officer is physically present at the official meeting location unless unfeasible due to the health pandemic or emergency declaration, and all votes are recorded by roll call pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Clearly, we are in the midst of a health pandemic. As a result, we are looking to move a resolution this evening that states that due to the declared health pandemic and the declared state of emergency pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.021, until further notice, all school board meetings will be held by teleconference and other means. So I would entertain a motion on that resolution.
So moved. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to take the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to item 2.2, open forum and public comments. I do know that we have Superintendent Lennox at the site. Do we have any public comment that has come in electronically or in person?
We do not. And just as a reminder, for anyone who would want to address the board, we do have a form, and all of those comments would be read as received at this point in any of our upcoming meetings. But there's none this evening.
Excellent. We'll move to item 2.3, announcements. I have asked Shawna to read the gifts for the duration of our electronic time. So Shawna, if you'd help us out with that.
All right, here we are. Gifts are received from Heidi Vanderbank for the lunch program Angel Fund at Turtle Lake Elementary School, Medtronic Volunteer Grant Program via Your Cause for student activities at Bel Air Elementary School, Rong Ying and He Feng Zhao for the Econ Club at Moundsview High School, Charities Aid Foundation for General Use at Bel Air Elementary School, Moundsview High School, and Chippewa Middle School, Charities Aid Foundation for Girls Swimming and Diving at Moundsview High School, Travelers Matching Gifts for Student Activities at Bel Air Elementary School, Alina Dollars for Doers Student Activities at Bel Air Elementary School, Kyle Cunningham for the Meals on Wheels Program Districtwide, 3M Foundation and Travis Gordon for General Use Districtwide, donations for the Ralph Reader Food Shelf were received from Medtronic or Cause, Minnesota Health Insurance Agency, Sunrise United Methodist Church, Craig Atkinson, Elizabeth Baldwin, Ruth and James Bauer, National Christian Foundation, Jeff Carver, Kristen Casilingo, Rob and Nusita Kovey, Gretchen Davis, Joanne R. Davis, Joseph Doxy, Kwani's Club of North Suburban, Golden Kay, Don Engel and Kwani's Members, Laura Ingelman, Elizabeth Frenzel-Jones, Andrew and Heidi Frye, Mr. and Mrs. Glasoff, Shepherd of the Hills, Tanisha Good and Pastor Bryce, Elizabeth Hansen, Lucinda Hagan-Merchek, Benjamin Jones, Donald Kapruski, Shoreview Community Foundation, Sue Knudsen, Dayton Lang and Associates, Simply Resurfus, Linda and Sally and Daniel Larson, Laura Lindstrand, Sean and Megan Luke, Gary Meeden, Mary Meyer, Terry Metcalf, Nancy Nielsen, Island Lake PTA, PTA President, Abiding Savior Lutheran Church Pastor Lisa Richardson, St. Judebelia Catholic Church, Jim Sumbuer, Lori and James Snyder, Northeast Bank, New Brighton, Mike Scholl, and Miss Soljelis, Clarence Seaman, Howard Sims, Culvers of St. Anthony, Sweet Cream Enterprises, Diane Sparks and staff, Craig Strain, Stefan and Noreen Thompson, Mydra Vega-Surev, Norman and Karen Zinnis, Marilyn John Wallstrand, Boston Scientific, Doug Wysper, Barb and Robert Woodruff, Eric Hogan, Hannah Fram, James Smith, Jennifer Lindgren, Mark Oswald, Michael Spelman, Ramu Subermanan, Sean Kennedy, Valentine Hill PTO President and PTO Member. It is recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend thanks to the donors.
Thanks Shawna. Certainly, a significant outpouring of support for the food shelf. I will just quickly remind folks that there is a financial threshold for recognizing the gifts. So in addition to the incredible support that we just read off, hundreds of additional folks who have been supporting our community through the Ralph Reader Food Shelf. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, April 28th, there's a regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM, May 7th, a work session of the board at 6:00 PM, and May 12th, a regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM, all hosted in our new online format. We'll move to item 2.3, superintendent's report. Superintendent Lennox?
Great, thank you, Jonathan. I want to start this evening by extending our thanks. Really, I want to say thank you to our staff, our students, our parents, and the entire community for their partnership as we navigate COVID-19. Later in the agenda this evening, I'll share more detail about the work that's being done as it relates to distance learning here in the district. But suffice it to say, none of it would be possible without the amazing people that make up our school district and this community. These are challenging times for everyone. And on behalf of myself and the entire administrative team, we want you to know, we couldn't do this without you. Your efforts are noticed and appreciated, and we want to thank you for all you're doing. And some additional recognition, recognition I want to share this evening, I want to highlight the work of Coach Scott Davis and the Irondale Nightcrawler Robotics Team. Some of you may have seen the media coverage, but when the call went out about the need for personal protective equipment, this group sprang into action. They immediately started to produce plastic face shields for medical personnel and first responders using 3D printers. The team is currently running production 10 hours a day, six days a week. They are currently producing 1,000 shields per week and intend to continue that production through May 1st. I also want to thank 3M for their donation of material, and also the Moundsview Educational Foundation for their financial support of this project. This truly is a team effort of students, staff, parents, and our community coming together to meet a critical need during this peacetime emergency. And I need to tell you, we just couldn't be more proud of this effort. So for those of you that want to know more about the Nightcrawler team or this project, I would really encourage you, go and visit their website, which is at www dot team 2052 dot com. With that, I'll end my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Lennox. That'll take us to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. Motion carries. Move to item 4.1, termination of probationary staff, and I will ask Amy Jo Johnson to present on this.
Right, good evening, everyone. So it is necessary to terminate the contracts of a number of probationary staff, and they were listed on Attachment E that was sent out with the agenda. The terminations are due to decreases, changes in enrollment, elimination of positions, uncertainty of funding, and lack of funds, performance, or return of senior teachers from a leave of absence. It is the administration's recommendation that the board review the certified staff and that they support the resolution.
Any questions for Amy Jo or the team? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that certified staff listed in Attachment A be terminated pursuant to the attached resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and feverishly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. Motion carries. It takes us to item 4.2, proposed placement of certified staff on unrequested leave of absence. Amy Jo?
Well, it's necessary to place the attachment. Oh, hang on here. I have the wrong agenda here. I apologize here. It is necessary to propose a number of certified staff that are listed in the Attachment B of the agenda for layoffs, to decreases and changes in enrollment, elimination of positions, uncertainty of funding and lack of funds, a request for voluntary unrequested leaves, or the return of more senior teachers from a leave. Each staff member proposed for placement on our URL has a statutory right to a hearing. If such a hearing is requested within 14 calendars after the proposed action, it is recommended by administration that the certified staff listed on the attachment be proposed replacement on URL pursuant to the attached resolutions.
I would move certified staff listed in Attachment B be proposed for placement on unrequested leave of absence pursuant to the attached resolutions.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. Motion carries. That will take us to item 4.3, ratification of paraprofessionals' contract for 2019 to 2021. And we will ask Amy Jo Johnson and Bridget Peterson to provide us some background.
I see I've lost Amy Jo. Is anybody else?
You're flying solo, Bridget.
I see that too.
All right, well, let me gather my details here. Just a minute while I...
I see Amy Jo's back.
Pop back up for a second.
I apologize, my internet just kind of blooped out on me there. So we have reached a tenant agreement with our parent educators. We met a total of six negotiation sessions, and we did have four mediation sessions. Our last negotiation session was on April 2nd. And we did that virtually, so that was a first for Moundsview School District. And we reached the tenant agreement on April 2nd, and then the members took the agreement out for a vote on April 13th and approved it. The major contract points include an increase to the salary schedule of 2% in year one and 1.8% in year two of the contract. There was an increase of longevity of five cents, and that begins at the year five of service. The total contract increase of 3.85% was over the two-year period. It has, is recommended by administration that the board approve the proposed contract between the school district and the parent educator union as presented for the 1921 school years.
Could you just clarify that this, you know, we have a goal as a board to keep our contracts mid-range? How does this meet that, that, that goal?
Well, the school board had set some parameters prior to us negotiating all of our contracts, and the negotiator, the parameters that were set were to stay within what the funding increases were for the state, which were 2 and 2. So we are happy that we are able to settle a contract that stayed within those ranges by the school board.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? I would just add my appreciation for the work of administration in negotiating this, and also our thanks to the paras for stepping up in the midst of this pandemic and helping us get to a resolution on this. You know, we know now as much as ever, the work that they do in our buildings is critical, and we appreciate, we appreciate that work. So glad to have a resolution on this so we can, we can get back at it. With that, we do have a recommendation that the board approve the proposed contract between the school district and the parent educators union as presented for 2019, 2021. I would entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
So moved.
Has been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item 4.4, SOAR property acquisition, and I will ask Assistant Superintendent John Ward to provide some background.
Good evening. I'll do a brief recap on how we got to where we are tonight. If you recall, in, in 16 and 17, we formed a facilities task force to look through all of our buildings. At that time, at Moundsview High School, they identified a series of needs. Those needs were bigger than the physical plant we had present. So they identified, looking into the acquisition of the, of the bus terminal, which is located right across Lake Valentine Road from Moundsview High School. And at that time, we know, we knew that we either needed to build on it or we needed it for parking so we could build on the property across the street. At that time, we went, negotiated with the owner of the property. That took about a year. At some point, we were unable to come to a mutual agreement, so we moved for eminent domain. About one year ago, we acquired the property through eminent domain. The only open question was exactly what the compensation would be for the property. We did receive an award about four months ago. But the, the owner of the property did have some right to yet appeal that award. So we directed our counsel to negotiate with his counsel to come up with a potential settlement agreement that would end any other expenditure of legal fees. And we were able to do that, and that's how we got here tonight. There's been a stipulation for settlement and agreement that's been drafted, signed by the other party. It would need your approval. I believe our district council drafted a potential motion to approve the stipulated amount. The administrative recommendation tonight is that you approve the stipulated amount and settlement agreement, which comes to $3,068,000.
Thanks. Any questions from the board on that? I will note that we had an opportunity in a work session just prior to this meeting to, to sit with our attorney and get fully briefed in the background of this.
Yeah, and I just would also like to point out the good staff work on this, and this is, you know, we were coming in within the budgeted amount we had set as a board to acquire the property.
So, without any further discussion, I would entertain a motion for the board to approve the settlement with SOAR for the acquisition of the property across from Moundsview High School for $3,068,000 and to authorize staff and legal counsel to execute all documents necessary to finalize the settlement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
Demay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhagen.
Aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item 5.1, district learning update. And in advance of turning this over to the superintendent, I will share that, like many of our parents, I am a newly minted at-home distance learning teacher, so experiencing all of this for the first time. And I know Chris is going to provide an update on what we're hearing and feeling and seeing across the district, but would like to preemptively offer my thanks for the really good work across our system that has gone into equipping us to, to lead as parents and teachers in, in this new way. I would also like to just recognize our teachers. I think we've got a whole generation of parents who have a, a new appreciation for the work that all of you do in helping educate our young people and take them off our hands for five to six hours a day. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Lennox.
Well, thank you, Jonathan. And, and you're correct. You know, I said in my superintendent's report just how appreciative I am of everyone partnering with us. That absolutely includes our parents. This is challenging, and it's challenging for everyone. So know that our gratitude is there for all you're doing in your own homes. But as, as all of you know by now, school districts across the country have been forced to move into various forms of distance learning for our students. Here in Minnesota, we're now in week three of distance learning. And I wanted to start my report tonight by acknowledging some of the challenges that we're, we're facing and acknowledging that really, none of us chose this path. COVID-19 has changed our world. All of us are quarantining, staying home, social distancing, and having virtual school board meetings. You know, our lives have, have changed, they've been disrupted. But as, as parents, teachers, and students, I think we all look forward to a day when we're through the pandemic and can return to our schools. In the meantime, I want to provide for you an update of, of the work that's being done around distance learning in the Moundsview Public Schools. You may recall that school districts in Minnesota were charged through Executive Order of the Governor by really providing three essential services. And, and those were first, providing meals for our students. Second, we're to provide childcare for medical workers, first responders, essential employees. And, and third, we're to provide distance learning for our students. So how are we doing? Well, I'm proud to be able to tell you that over the last three weeks, our district has served approximately 28,000 breakfasts and lunches to our students. That's more than 1,800 every day, and we anticipate that that need will continue rising as the length of the pandemic extends. I want to take an opportunity to thank our nutrition service staff for their hard work, their dedication in preparing and packaging up all of these meals. And I also want to thank our, our bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and others who stepped up to help distribute the meals over the last several weeks. This has been a collective effort to meet the, the needs of our students, and all of the help we have received is very much appreciated. We're also providing childcare on a daily basis for more than 100 families of medical emergency and essential, essential workers. We're averaging between 50 and 60 students a day based on parents' work schedules. We are fortunate to be able to partner with the YMCA to provide this care. And I want to thank the Y staff, as well as our own paras, other staff who've stepped forward to assist in providing this very important service for the, the children of these frontline workers. But the biggest adjustment to our system really has been moved to distance learning. Our staff had approximately one week to change our entire educational model and move from a traditional in-person instruction to virtual classrooms and the delivery of distance learning. I, I need to tell you, in, in more than 30 years in education, I've never seen any change move as quickly or efficiently as, as this moved to distance learning has happened. Has it gone perfectly? Well, of course not. But given the speed at which the change was made, it has gone amazingly well. Our staff remain committed to continuous improvement. And I can tell you that they've been making adjustments since the inception of this new model, and that we're better today than we were yesterday, and will be better tomorrow than we are today. One group I do have to highlight is our technology department. Penny Pease, our, our new technology director, has been nothing short of stellar. With only days to prepare, she and her team were able to organize, catalog, and distribute Chromebooks technology devices to our students from first grade through 12th grade. There's no way our teachers would be able to interact with students in the same way without this distribution of resources. And I can't begin to thank her and her team enough for the effort they put into making that happen. They really are all-stars. Next, I have to highlight our teachers, because to a person, they've embraced this new instructional model. Not by choice, mind you, but when the only classroom available to them is a virtual classroom, you adapt. Teachers have been spending countless hours creating lessons, videos, content for our students. They've really leaned into this disruptive change and are actively looking for opportunities to engage students in new and different ways. Make no mistake, as difficult it is then, our teachers are using this experience to improve their instructional skills and become even more effective educators. They really are amazing. And recently, we reached out to our parents and students with a survey. We wanted to collect some information from them about their perceptions of distance learning and how they thought that was going. And I just want to share some of that data with you tonight. I'll start with the feedback we got from students. At the middle level, our students identified email and live classroom video conferencing as the top ways that they were currently interacting with their teachers, which actually aligned perfectly with their preferences when asked about how they preferred to do that interaction. As for homework, well, 78% of our middle school students felt they were getting about the right amount of coursework assigned to them during the week. Of course, we'll continue to monitor that as the weeks progress. And when asked for an evaluation of their overall distance learning experience, our middle school students provided positive feedback, really across all of the questions, save the connection to their classmates. It was not surprising, as a virtual connection is often, you know, it's less satisfying than a connection in person. But we'll continue to work with our students to find ways to improve their connections with their peers as we remain in this distance learning model. Now, at the high school level, students also identified email and live classroom video conferencing as the top ways that they were interacting with teachers. Again, this aligned with their preferences when asked how they preferred to interact with teachers. So we were pleased with those results. But as for homework, 31% But as for homework, 31% of our high school students responded saying they felt they were getting too much coursework assigned during the week. We are meeting with our principals and teachers to identify specific areas where that might be happening and identifying any adjustments that we may have to make as we move forward. And finally, when we asked students, high school students for their evaluation of their distance learning experience, the students provided, again, positive feedback across all questions except that connection to other students. Their feelings on this issue, though, were even stronger than their middle school peers. It's very clear that they're identifying a loss of personal connection with their classmates as something they're, they're truly missing at this point. So, as with our middle school students, this will continue to be an area that we watch very closely as we remain in distance learning. And now for some of the parent feedback. Across all of the levels, we asked about the amount of coursework that was be given, being given to our, our students. And at an elementary level, 70% of parents felt the amount of work given was just about right. 22% felt it wasn't enough and 8% thought, well, maybe it's too much. Of course, these are averages across all of our elementary buildings. So, it would be important to note that each building has specific feedback they're looking at and evaluating for their specific buildings and grade levels at each of our sites so that they can review that and make adjustments as appropriate. At the middle level, 64% of parents felt the amount of work given was just about right. 29% said, I don't think it's enough. And 7% thought, well, maybe it's too much. So, this is definitely an area we're going to be looking at more closely because if you remember, at the middle level, 78% of the students felt they were already getting the right amount of coursework and only 6% thought it wasn't enough. So, this is significantly different between what the students thought and what the parents thought. Perhaps not surprising given that many of our middle school students probably aren't looking for additional coursework, but something we have to look at nonetheless and make sure we're finding the right spot in terms of what we're doing for parents and for students moving forward. Now, at the high school level, 73% of parents told us they thought the amount of coursework given was just about right. 16% said not enough and 11% said, there's probably too much. Again, this is different feedback than we've received from our students. If you recall, 31% of students felt they were getting too much coursework when assigned as opposed to the 11% their parents were saying. So, we will be studying that. We'll be working with our, our high school staff and administrators to look for patterns across buildings as well as any specific courses or content areas that we may need to address moving forward with distance learning. As for parents' overall assessment of distance learning, there really was consistency across elementary and middle school. At these levels, more than 90% of our parents said that they felt the clarity of assignments, the quality of the coursework and the communication was either good, very good or excellent. At the high school level, the results fell slightly, where 85% of parents felt that the clarity of assignments, quality of coursework and communication were good, very good or excellent. So, overall, it seems that the first weeks of distance learning are going well. But I want the school board and public to know that as an administrative team, we've been meeting weekly, weekly with our leadership at each one of our buildings. I'm having individual check-ins with every principal each week. We've already started to analyze the feedback we've received from these district-wide surveys. It will be used to make adjustments and improvements to the way we're doing distance learning over the next days and weeks. Each building also received the parents and student comments that were provided through the survey and they're digging into those, reviewing that information. And we'll use it to reinforce things that are going well and also make adjustments where necessary. So, moving forward, I think the public should expect us to continue to reach out, solicit feedback about this distance learning experience that we're all part of. At a classroom level, I, I want you to know our teachers are also collecting feedback about what's working for their particular students and what needs to be improved in this new virtual classroom model. You do have our commitment to engage in continuous growth and improvement. We know that not every activity or assignment will go as well as it was planned or designed, but we certainly will be evaluating our efforts on a daily basis, making adjustments to bring our students the best distance learning experience we can for as long as it's going to be necessary. So, with that, I'd be happy to open it up for any board member comments, questions if you have them. And I just appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief update about how things are kicking off with distance learning.
Any questions or comments for Chris?
I mean, I guess I'll just echo some of the comments, Jonathan, you made at the opening. I think the, you know, the, the two weeks has gone extremely well in my home. I've been very impressed with the level of communication from all the, you know, I've got a kid at the middle school and at the high school. So, it's been really positive from what I've seen. And I think just, I'm really impressed how quickly our teachers have adapted and our students have adapted. But, you know, our students are, this is kind of their normal. I think they, they're, you know, they're much better at everything, you know, to do with technology than I am. But for our staff to really adjust to this so quickly, I'm just really impressed. And it's been, it's been just the right amount of work, I think, from, from our perspective. So, I just wanted to add that and say thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Sandra. Well, great update as always, Chris. Please extend our gratitude to, to all of the folks that you highlighted on behalf of the board. It has been a Herculean feat and we certainly appreciate the work that has gone into it. We'll take us to item 6.1, updates. AMSD and legislative, not a lot non-COVID related happening, but do we have an update from AMSD, Diane?
Actually, I will defer to Jim if he has anything that he would like to update.
Well, they, they have not had any meetings, but I've been following their emails that they've been sending me on a daily basis and you know, there's some activity down at the Capitol, but mostly what I'd like to report is that, you know, we are in for a bit of a wild ride with the state capital and funding probably over the next four or five months. And we all should be very aware of that because the COVID-19 situation does have a big impact on revenues for the state. And as I said, going forward, we all need to be aware of that. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, Jim, I think you highlight something that this body will start to watch really closely as we head into the next state biennial budget. Recognizing that the, the surplus that was anticipated is gone. The rainy day fund is depleted. And any, you know, further efforts are going to require offsets based on our state's constitution and the requirement for a balanced budget. So, I think you're absolutely right that we are in for a wild ride and we will, we will take that as it comes. How about any updates on 916 or the Ramsey County League? Mary Jo?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of things. I've got a great update from 916 Superintendent Connie Hayes, and I'll send that to the board. Pretty similar, but with this, of course, the special education spin on it regarding distance learning in a short period of time. They as well set up distance learning, including the childcare piece for our special education students and did a great job. I'll send you that. At the league, the March 13th kind of this early distance sitting was taking place. But Charlie Zelli gave a great talk. There were a lot of people there. I've got some great notes on his insight as he has just early on taking, taking this role on coming from DOT. We're also moving, we've been zooming our meetings at the league and let's see, 916, what are we doing? Something different. I think I have to use my phone for those meetings. Never quite remember which is which. But, so we're moving to online. We've canceled our April. Potentially have an online event in May and watch for those emails.
Great. Thank you for those reports. That will take us to sev, item 7.1, school board member reports. Anything that folks want to chime in on? Hearing none, I will briefly offer just a few closing comments. We talk a lot as a school district and as a governing body about the Moundsview way. It's a little bit of a culture of how we do things and how we operate. And I will tell you, there has been nothing more Moundsview than how we have implemented and executed in response to this crisis. I've always been proud to be a graduate of this system, a parent in this system, and now a, a leader of the school district. And I am more proud today than I ever have been. So, just want to double down on my appreciation and gratitude to the staff and students and parents who are fueling the continued learning for our young people. Chris, you and your administration have been top-notch through all of this. So, I want to make sure that you know how much that this board appreciates the partnership that we have with you. Special shout-out tonight to our clerk who is fulfilling her duties in a way that she hasn't had to previously. So, crushing that. And then just a, a quick acknowledgement of, you know, my colleagues on the board. Each of you brings a different perspective to this work. And I think that, you know, we're feeling that more acutely in this environment. And I would just like to tell you that it, it is killing me that we're not sitting around a table together and walking out the door this evening and catching up on family life and other pleasantries as we head to our cars. It is a, it's a new environment, albeit temporary. And I am grateful to be leading this work with all of you. With that, I would ask if there is anything else to come before the board. We are adjourned.